Deborah Bolak.
Joe Lombardi. Guillermo Serna.
Ken Parks.
Andy Chavez, Street Department with the City of Commerce City.
Liz Finn.
Denise Cazza, Parks and Recreation.
Sheri Mamesian, Parks and Recreation.
Dennis Davenport, current president of Commerce City Employees Local 1144, and I work in the Police Department.
Tony Harameo, Parks and Recreation.
Keith Wood with the Colorado State Forest Service.
Marie Tito.
Greg Thomas, Pterodactyl Baseball.
Beau Thomas, Pterodactyl Baseball.
Marcus Sanchez.
Maximus Peraro.
Marquis Sanchez.
Carmen Sanchez.
Ray Benson, Public Works.
Mike Correlia.
Ed Raven, Parks and Rec.
Walt Raven, Parks and Rec.
Nick Hostetler asked me Colorado. We represent Commerce City workers and about thirteen hundred other union members across the state.
Betsy Boudreau, St. Anthony North Health Foundation.
Kathleen Drauzda, St. Anthony North Health Foundation.
George Mayby, Commerce City Rotary.
Sharon Mayby, Commerce City Rotary Mental Health Initiative.
Kevin O'Connell, Commerce City Rotary Mental Health Initiative.
Kelsey Ballard.
Jesse Udomitas, Inspire.
Patricia Flores.
Greg Peck.
Chad Hightower.
Andy Goan.
Bill Tannenbaum.
Kelly Tannenbaum.
Mike Flotis.
Patrick Avery.
Glenn Nichols.
Rachel Monroe, Almost Home.
Dale Mingleton Adams, 14 Education Foundation.
Janelle Salz, Adams 14 Education Foundation.
Linda King, Executive Director, Adams County Food Bank.
Pam Heinz.
Ed Hanson, President of the Commerce City Cultural Council.
Lisa Gokenauer, Community Uplift Partnership.
Keely Thompson, Community Uplift Partnership.
Tania Lopez, Adam City Middle School.
Matt Schwartz, Adam City Middle School.
Cheryl Carstens, Finance.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Bill Howland, US Air Force Retired.
Heather Orr, with The Precious Child.
Angela Borneman, Access Housing.
Colin McCorkle.
Renee Dees, with The Senior Hub.
Kip Sherodis, Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refugees.
Kate Kramer, Volunteer with Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refugees.
Kelly McFarland, Food Bank of the Rockies.
Alicia Aguilar, Access Housing.
Preston Martinez, Commerce City QCF Board Member.
Pam McDonald, Audio Information Network of Colorado.
Daniela Villarreal, Community Liaison.
Brendan Benz, Vice President for the Commerce City QCF. Jim Comro, President, Quality Community Foundation.
Kathy Blighman, Human Resources.
Again, thank you all for being here tonight. As you can see, we have a lot of nonprofits in the audience. Before we get started, every Monday night at council meetings, I always do the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. And tonight, I want to make sure we do the moment of silence. We have lost a longtime resident and a member of our Board of Adjustment recently, very active person in our community. I want to give Mayor Proton Bolak a chance to say a few things about Carol, and then we'll stand for a moment of silence.
Oh, the person we're speaking about tonight is Carol Har. And he was on the Board of Adjustment with me and Andrew. He was a teacher at Adam City High School. Then he came back and became an administrator. Then he came back again when they needed him and became an assistant principal. Then he came back again when they needed him again, and he said, "Okay, I'm going to help you get your foundation together for vocational planning and inflammation." So Carol has been in this community a long time. And it, you know, you start off and you think, "Well, I can get through this and say all of these great things," but it just hits you sometimes that you're missing someone you aren't going to see again. And I will see him again someday, but not now. But Carol Har was a standout in this community, and I just want you to think about him. And you that knew him, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. So, thank you.
So, please stand for a moment of silence. Keep in mind the family of Carol Har. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is proclamations and recognitions. And today, I would like to invite Keith Wood from the Colorado State Forest Service and Tony Harameo from our Parks and Recreation and Golf Department forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight as a member of the Parks Recreation and Golf Department in celebration of Arbor Day. With me tonight is Keith Wood with Colorado State Forest Service, and he will be presenting the city with its twenty-sixth consecutive Tree City USA Award. So, I'd like to introduce Keith at this time.
Great. Thank you, Tony, for that introduction, and thanks, Mayor Ford, and City Council for time on the agenda tonight to present the Tree City Award to the City of Commerce City. As Tony mentioned, it's the twenty-sixth one you'll be receiving, and I was talking to Tony before the meeting here, and he's been here for all of them. So, that's pretty impressive. That's one of the first standards we look for as part of this program, and it's an annual application that is sent to us at the Colorado State Forest Service. We review it, make sure the four standards are met, and we send it along to the Arbor Day Foundation in Nebraska City, and then they send the recognition materials for us to recognize your communities. So, we make sure that there's somebody in town like Tony here that's in charge of the tree planting and care program. We make sure the tree ordinance is still effective in place. The third standard is a budget of $2 per capita around the Tree City USA program, so a little money is spent on tree planting and care. And then the fourth thing is having an Arbor Day observance proclamation like we have here this evening. And I wanted to mention a couple of things that Tony made me aware of, that you guys accomplished last year that really helped towards your Tree City status and maintaining that. Two new neighborhood parks were built that included one hundred and fifty-seven new trees in those parks. In addition to the new trees in the new parks, the tree replacement program continued with a hundred new trees being planted around the community as well. So, I think our Tree Cities really understand the value of planting trees in our community and taking care of them. They really put money in our pockets by conserving energy, increasing property values, encouraging people to linger longer and spend more money in our business districts, and helping our health and well-being by helping keep our air and water clean. And in a more recent study that I read this year, there's been some work done back in the Midwest where they're losing a large part of their canopy to Emerald Ash Forest, that crime has actually increased in those neighborhoods. And the more well-canopied and well-kept neighborhoods with those tree resources still intact have a lower crime rate. So, I think we're finding more and more benefits to our urban trees and the canopy and protection they provide. So, I'd like to say thank you for the support of this program over the twenty-six years, and be sure and thank Tony here and his staff for all the hard work that they've done. And with that, I'd like to present the award.
You know, how about we get this proclamation read, and then we'll come down and present you with the proclamation. You can present to us with the Tree City USA Award. So, our proclamation, will the City Attorney please read the proclamation?
Whereas the City of Commerce City desires to recognize and observe Arbor Day along with others across the nation and throughout the world, and whereas the City of Commerce City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the twenty-sixth consecutive year, and whereas the City Council and staff wish to promote an interest in the planting of trees in residential areas as well as city-owned parks, trails, and open space, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City declares April 21, 2017, as Arbor Day, recognized with activities such as providing tree seedlings and tree care information to the community. Be it further resolved that Council urges all residents to support efforts to care for our trees, woodlands, and support the city's community forestry program.
Thank you very much. Proclamation's been read. Mr. Bolak?
I'd make a motion to accept the proclamation as read.
Thank you, Mr. McElhany.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. If you all join me down front, please.
Okay, count of three. One, two, three. Take a few more. There we go. Thank you.
I see a little sparklies in your eye. All right, next item is Quality Community Foundation Grant Awards, which I think is why most folks are here this evening. So, I'd like to invite the QCF President, Jim Comro, forward to present the grant awards. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'd like to thank the Council for their continued support of the Quality Community Foundation and their commitment to build a quality community for a lifetime in the great City of Commerce City. Your financial support helps several fantastic organizations do good for our citizens. Every year, we receive a number of grant applications from various 501(c)(3) organizations who spend a lot of time, energy, and resources in order to help the people of Commerce City get by. Going through these applications is a tough job because many of these organizations are really doing wonderful work, and it's kind of hard to go through these and decide who we want to give funds to and who we might have a little trouble getting funds to because really all of them are deserving. In a moment, I'll be presenting checks to some of these organizations, and I would ask that we hold any applause until the process is completed. So, without further ado, I'll bring up Preston Martinez, who's going to help me, and then I will call up the, I guess, awardees, one by one.
Well, when they do come up and you give them the check, we'd like them all to come up here and stand on the stage so that when, after all the checks have been handed out, we'll come down and take a picture with everybody.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
So, we'll get started. I'd like to bring up A Precious Child, awarded $3,000. Thank you. Access Housing of Adams County. Adams 14. I apologize. Access Housing got $4,000. Adams 14.
John, while you're calling names, you can actually stand on this side of the podium and tip that mic this way.
Oh, well.
So, you don't have to try to have your back to everybody.
Perfect. So, Adams 14, $5,000. Thank you so much. Adams 14 Education Foundation, $5,000. Is that the one with the chip? What's right? I kind of feel like Steve Harvey. Almost Home. Oh, I missed one. Sorry. Adams County Emergency Food Bank, 7,500. Now, Almost Home. Audio Information Network of Colorado. CASA of Adams and Brumfield Counties. The amount was 7,500, and then for Audio Information Network of Colorado was 1,200. Catholic Charities and Community Services of the Archdiocese of Denver, $4,000. Catholic Health Initiatives, Colorado Foundation, DBA St. Anthony North Health Foundation, 7,491. CCYA Pterodactyls, CCYA General, $2,000. Commerce City Cultural Council, $4,000. Commerce City Historical Society, $1,000. Commerce City Rotary Foundation, $2,000. Community Uplift Partnership, $5,000. Environmental Learning for Kids, 2,500. Fish of Commerce City, $2,700. Food Bank of the Rockies, $7,000. Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refugees, 7,500. Inspire, 3,000. Joyful Journeys, Community Enrichment. See, that was joyful. Junior Achievement, Rocky Mountain Incorporated, $5,000. Kids First Healthcare, 7,500. Mercy Housing, Mountain Plains, 5,300. Ralston House, 6,338. Stout Street Foundation, 7,000. The Senior Hub Incorporated, 7,500. It's been an extreme pleasure to present checks to many of these organizations today. While we can't present checks to all of the applicants, we want to recognize all of the applicant's good work. So, I'd like to invite you, Mr. Mayor, and all the members of Council, down for photos of the recipients, and thank all of you for all of your hard work and what you do for our community.
I want to have the City Councils please stay up here on the stage, because since we're out here doing this, I don't want to leave those Boy Scouts out, and I'd like to ask them and their leaders to come up here and get a picture, too. All right, we're going to get on with the meeting. So, the next item is citizen communication. Per City Council policy, citizen communication is the time in our agenda for the public to address the Council on Business Affairs of the city. The City Council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before the City Council. Please reserve such comments for appropriate public hearings. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. After you have heard from those people who've signed up to speak, all right, let me get into the list here. I have three people who have signed up on the list. We'll start with Joseph Lombardi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, I believe Sean, you probably remember me.
Yep, I do.
We had a few meetings. Anyway, you said not to talk about any land things.
Just items that are going to come before the Council. We can't take testimony outside of a hearing if there's a land use coming forward. So, but tell us what you're here for and what your concerns are.
Well, I was concerned about my property, which...
Mr. Lombardi, really quick, I need your name and address for the record.
Yes. Joseph Lombardi, Alleva 3243, East 94th Drive, Thornton, Colorado. All right. My main concern besides the land that I own, which is at the end of Potomac, right against Highway 76, which is bound by the railroad, Highway 2, and Highway 76. I've been trying for years and years trying to get it redeveloped, but every time I get someone interested in, and they go to the city, they talk them out of it, for whatever reason. And they refuse to change the zoning, and I have an agreement here with the city which dates back to 1988, which was at the time where they wrote the airport. And they got after me every day. Come, Mercedes, say, "We want to incorporate your land into Commerce City." Well, I think that was a big mistake. I was better off unincorporated. I had more things that I could do, and every time I get a buyer, they said, "No, we can't change the zoning." Well, it tells me right here, I can have any kind of zoning I want, or reverse back to the county. I tried to reverse back to the county, and they said, "Well, we don't know what to do, so I have to get a high-priced lawyer to do it." I don't have money to waste. I'm 76 years old, and I, you know, I... My son was the one who was pushing me to do all those things. He passed away eight years ago of an accident, and it was his own fault. So, I've been dead for the last eight years and just barely coming back. I want to do something. I've even had people that want to put a hotel over there, but when they do their due diligence, everything falls apart. So, I don't know what the problem is. But that's a matter for another day. The real reason I'm here tonight is to prevent... The real reason I'm here tonight is to prevent a real bad accident that could happen anytime, and that's the railroad crossing over there. It's really, really dangerous. There's train coming down, you know, you can tell me, "Oh, they're not supposed to go over 30, 40 miles." They come rolling down the railroad at 70 miles an hour. And by the time you look both ways, a lot of time, the train, if it comes from the north side, there's an underpass over there, and you sit on one or the other side of the railroad, you cannot see the train. And you picture this, okay, there's a... I rented out to this guy, they got some horses over there. You know, families and kids, they go over there for the weekend to spend time, have a picnic, do whatever. And you know all these SUVs, all these cars? They're pretty solid anymore. You can't hear anything on the outside. If the train is whoing the horn far away, you cannot hear it. First, on the other side of the underpass, you cannot see or hear them. Because if you sit on one or the other side of the railroad, you're looking at it at an angle. You cannot see the train until you're running top of the railroad. I mean, when I go there, I'm careful because I know what the problem is. But if you get somebody else... Excuse me, if you get somebody else, you know, most people say to say, they approach a railroad crossing, they just glance at the way and out they go. If they don't clear their track in five seconds, their train, they don't see the train coming through there, they're going to get hit. And I don't know if you, a lot of you realize, but there was a girl killed, there a high school girl killed at the intersection years ago. And you know how teenagers are, you know, you can take the horse to, you know, to drink, you can make him drink. This is a really bad accident waiting to happen. The other day, I got this guy that was going to do some work for me there, some cleaning up. And I was waiting for him over there. He got over there, he was all sweaty. I thought, you know, it was wide as a sheet. I thought he was going to die. Said, "I almost got hit by a train." I said, "What do you mean, 'almost got hit by a train'? Didn't you stop?" "Yeah," I said, "I stopped. I looked both ways. I didn't see anything. I stopped crossing. Pretty soon there it was."
Let me get to some of your concerns here, Mr. Lombardi. First of all, I know your property very well. And I want to make sure that the staff and council members in the room understand what property it is. So if you were on Highway 2, directly west of the new rec center is Bond Concrete, has some concrete buildings.
Right.
It's to the north of that. So it's a triangle piece between Highway 2, Highway 76. The ditch comes through there, so there's a bridge for the ditch, and there's also an unprotected railroad crossing for the BNSF.
Exactly.
Okay? There are some residents back there. So I'm going to start with the railroad crossing. I would suggest to this council to have the staff put together a letter requesting, BNSF, take a look at that crossing, to make sure that it meets the standards because it is totally unprotected. There are no lights, no bells, no whistles, no arms, nothing.
At least the conducive lights, or somebody will stop.
Well, and I want to make clear to you that the city government doesn't have any authority to do anything with the railroads. The railroads have a much higher authority with the federal government, and we do not control what happens with the rails. So I would ask the staff put together a letter, and I will ask here in a minute if the council will support that letter. And we'll send off a letter requesting them to look into that crossing.
Sure.
The other thing that's concerning me is that bridge. I don't know how good a shape the bridge is in over the ditch. And I'm going to ask here in a second about your zoning. However, one of the things that, and I've worked with you and tried to help you to try to develop your property...
Yes, you have.
Part of the problem is, public improvements for railroad crossing and to get over that ditch for a bridge become very, very costly. And so I'm sure anybody that has an interest in buying the property because there's no way to access I-76 to get into your property from the state, those improvements are major improvements when you're talking bridge and railroad crossings. So I'm sure that that would detour about anybody. But I would like to know what our long-range development plan is zoned, what that property is zoned for, for future development, so that Mr. Lombardi knows what he can and cannot do based on what it is intended to be zoned. I'm assuming a form of industrial, but I don't know for sure. I also want to make sure, Mr. Lombardi, that you have the opportunity to communicate with our economic development staff and our planning director, so that you can make sure that you have a clear idea of what can and can't happen on the property and what kind of improvements would be expected for development. And so, Mr. McBroom, the city manager, is sitting here. And he will make sure that you get those contacts so that you can find out exactly what is intended by zoning, for future zoning of your property? What allowed uses are allowed in that? Because you have the right to develop that property.
Yes.
The downside to what I'm hearing is, if you have somebody that meets that zoning, you come in to rezone it, and they sit down and the city runs them off, in a sense, it's because they're telling them what the public improvement costs are going to be, and those costs are extremely high. So I think it's important that the city know, and you know, and are on the same page when it comes to your property.
Right.
What has to be done and what you can and cannot do. And if they can't come to that conclusion, then we need to see you back in here and consider your agreement that you had of deannexation. But we don't want to deannex anybody. We want to make sure that we're working with you. So the only way I can do that is to make sure you have access to our economic development, to our planning director, and you know what can and can't happen on that property. And our staff is here to work with you. I'd ask that Roger or Troy, after I'm done talking to you, will meet with you in the back and give you a contact. So that you have a number to call. And then I'd like to know how that goes. But I'm assuming they do a great job. I'm assuming everything will be taken care of for you. And then as soon as you step down from the podium, I'm going to ask the council to consider that letter for the railroad. And hopefully that'll address those issues for you.
Yes, and I really appreciate it because like I says, I'm really concerned about somebody getting killed over there. You know, something which can even sleep a night. And as far as the bridge is concerned, they're going to have to do something with their bridge because, I mean, we have a right to get collection from trash trucks and that. And they weigh a lot more than the bridge will allow.
But that's going to be through Fraeco and the Burlington Ditch Company, and that's a whole separate board in itself. And that's going to be, that's going to be more of a struggle than your zoning, sir.
I know.
Or the railroad. The railroad and the ditch are going to cause you a lot more problems than the city could ever cause you.
I know who owns the ditch, been trying to contact them forever. I can't get nowhere with them.
Scott Edgar is the manager of the ditch company there in Brighton off of a bridge. I'd be glad to help you get that contact as well. If you'd contact me offline, I'll help you get those contacts that you need. But Roger looks like he's prepared to get you the information that you need. And if you have any other concerns or problems, you're welcome back here at any time. Or you can just call me and we'll follow up.
Okay.
Great.
I really appreciate that. And also, you know, on a personal note, I remember we talked about putting in a restaurant in Commerce City, an Italian restaurant. Because there's really, I hate to say, but there's no genuine Italian food.
Well, bring that up to the economic development department when you talk to them.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, my other son is the lead chef at Monarch Casino. And we are opening up, as a matter of fact, we're in the last stages of opening up one in Northland.
Okay.
On Melody Drive. But we are, you know, we have a lot of connections, a lot of people around us. We're planning to also do one in Commerce City.
Yeah.
It's still in our minds. It's just a matter of...
We'd love to help you get that done.
Yeah. Trying to get things together. We need one.
I agree. Thank you very much for coming in tonight, sir.
Okay, I appreciate you.
Yep, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Alright, council, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second to consider a letter to be sent to the BNSF Railroad concerning the unprotected crossing on the entrance to Mr. Lombardi's property. Mr. McElhany?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the drafting and sending of a letter to the BNSF regarding the property in question.
Thank you. Mr. Ballot?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to have the staff draft that letter for my signature. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next person on the list, Dennis Davenport. Come on up. Need you to state your name and address for the record when you get up here. And good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, honorable members of the city council and city leadership. My name is Dennis Davenport. I live in Thornton, 5091 East 106 Circle. As most of you are probably aware, I am a police department employee. I'm a crime scene investigator. And I'm currently the president of AFME Local 1144, which is your city employees' union. I'd like to, I come before you today, this evening, as I stand to represent the city employees of this city, this fine city. We're all very pleased to be here, as some of you can see, most of, representative sample of us are here in our green shirts. We, as the employees local, represent the civilian and police employees who do the paperwork of the police department, investigate the crimes, do the animal control, do our records management. We represent various administrative employees throughout the city. We represent the court employees who do all the administrative paperwork as well. Public works employees, which include the street maintenance, the snow removal, the building facility maintenance, and other facility positions. Fleet maintenance, parks workers, fine parks in Commerce City, the ballfields, they're all maintained by fine, upstanding parks workers who are employees of the city. And I think they do an outstanding job, as I think you can all recognize that. We also represent neighborhood service inspectors and several custodial positions throughout the city, as well as other positions. We come here today to express our appreciation to members of the city council and the city leadership, to our city, for supporting us as city employees. The city leadership helps to support the city employees with our contract with the city. It also helps to support our upcoming negotiations with the city, as our contract will be negotiating our next contract for the next several years, beginning in a few weeks with the city. Some of the things that we'd like to express our concern with and that we look forward to working with the city council, and specifically the city leadership in our negotiations, things like the high turnover rate amongst city employees. Currently, the city has a relatively high turnover rate. We tend to lose, for a variety of reasons, a great number of employees throughout different departments. We're concerned about this. This affects our levels of service throughout the city, and ultimately affects everyone's cost, community lifetime, and quality lifetime within the city. We're concerned with employee vacancies. There's a number of vacancies throughout the city within our local, and they tend to get filled. But the speed with which they get filled is not always as fast as we'd like to see that done. The city works very hard and proactively to get qualified employees filling positions, but we're always concerned about that being done adequately and efficiently. We're also concerned with fair, equal, and competitive wages and benefits. The city has traditionally provided us with very competitive benefits, and we're interested in pursuing that as well and continuing that relationship with the city. We're also interested in addressing our employee work-life balance. Many of our employees have, obviously have, a work balance and a life balance, and are interested in maintaining that quality work-life balance, which means things like not having to work 40 and 50 hours overtime because there are vacant positions. And ballparks and fields and snow, and snow removal takes effect with all those kinds of things. We're also looking forward to our negotiations. We're very interested in working competitively with the city and looking at all kinds of avenues to address the quality of life in the city, the quality of life and the work balance with our city employees, and we're looking forward to the negotiations. We'd also like to extend an invitation to all the members of the council to work proactively with the union and with the city council, our city employees, in both our negotiations. We'd welcome you, any of you guys, to sit in on the negotiations. I'm sure all of you guys would be welcome. I know some of the locals do that as well. And we also look forward to inviting you to some of our social events. We try to hold a barbecue in the summer. We'd like to invite all of you now for that. And we'll let you know when that is. And we look forward to working more proactively with both the city council and city leadership. And so I'd like the various members of our local, who are here present today, to just stand up. They're in the green shirts. You can't miss them, and be recognized.
Yep. While you're there, Dennis, I think it's really important to mention that I worked for the city for 10 years. And I worked with some of the folks that are in the audience today. And I still have a ton of respect for the employees at every level within this city. I know what it was like back in the early 90s. And I perceive that it has gotten better on some fronts. It's frustrating because right now it's really hard with the economy we have. There's employee issues everywhere. I know that we are no longer the size of city we were back in the 90s. We have grown exponentially. This city has over, probably tripled in size since I was an employee. So I know the road miles for plowing snow, the parks that we've built, and, you know, new rec center coming online. I know that there's a lot more for employees to have to do. And I know we're up around 600 employees to date for the city, which is astronomical. We're no longer that little city that we used to be.
Agreed.
And I applaud every single person in every one of them departments, whether they're in the audience or not, for the hard work that they do every day. Whether it's at the registration desk, at the rec center, dealing with some irate lady because her daughter can't get into swimming lessons, because we don't have enough pool space, that that employee didn't create, but has to deal with that problem. We see the same thing with the police department. We've got to get these guys off of 12-hour shifts. We've got to get more employees hired. And it's that turnover rate and what's going on right now with our economy. I will give you really quick, the economic forecast right now is on track to continue for the next 10 years. And as of right now, the state of Colorado has to have 90 homes a day. 90 homes a day to fulfill the need for the folks that are migrating to this state. The metro area has to have 60 a day. And in comparison to that, Commerce City did around 600 homes last year. That's 10 days worth of the annual need. And so all fronts are being pressured, not just at the city, but at the state and every other level. And with the ratchet down that Tabor has on government today in the state of Colorado, it makes it even more difficult for school districts to operate, fire districts, and municipalities. So everything's under pressure right now, and we're doing our best to hold all that together. And I will tell you right now, I know you have some of the best doing the job, and we don't want to lose those folks. But we also know that there are people attracting at every level of employment for municipalities right now. There are several big cities that are looking for city managers, that are looking for chiefs of police. So it is always this constant struggle because every day, there's an organization that's coming up and saying, "You know what? I can do a little bit better for you." And in some roles, we see some of those employees leave and come back because we try to make sure that we're very competitive on everything we do. I would wish all of you very well in your negotiations with the city, so that you end up, you know, trying to achieve the best you can achieve. And I know there's always a balance that is, at the end of the day, you might not get 100% of what you're asking for, but I don't want you to get nothing that you're asking for either. So there's a balance, and I know our folks will be helping with that. And you know what? It's nice to see you come to a city council meeting and really start off the way you did because literally, I had council members going, "What are they doing here?" Because, you know, most of the time, when there's a bunch of folks from the union that show up, it's, "What did we do wrong now? You know, what's not going right?" And so it was a pleasure to have you all come in tonight. And so it was a pleasure to have you all come in tonight, just to see you and be able to thank you for the jobs that you do. And I want to wish you well in those negotiations. And I'm very optimistic that it'll turn out to where there's gonna be a balance. Push hard for the things that are most important for you and the folks that you work with. And remember that I was one of you. I'm still rooting for you. So leave here with a positive attitude, and we wish you very well in the negotiations. And you're always welcome back in this council, in chambers, anytime you want, and my, my door is always open to you. So thanks again for everything you do for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
You've always been a strong advocate for our city workers at our union, and we definitely appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thanks again for being here tonight. JD?
I just wanted to thank all of you for coming. It's great to see you out here. We support everything that you, you are doing for us. I do know that when you negotiate across the table for all the issues that you brought up, you're not only negotiating for yourselves, you're negotiating for everybody. And we truly do appreciate that. And it's nice to see you here. It's nice to see some faces to these positions. And there's no way to thank you enough. And I'm really sorry if you're being overwhelmed, because we're short-staffed. I knew we were in the, in the police department. I guess I didn't realize all these other departments were having those issues. I think, hopefully, we're a great place to work, so hopefully that will be resolved soon. But thank you, thank you all. I was one of them in the parking lot that came in and said, they're putting their green t-shirts on. Are we okay?
And in jest, before you leave, I have to say, Mr. McBroom, are they all getting overtime right now? I had to give it a shot for you guys. Thanks again for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, or next person on the roster for citizen communication is Mr. Guillermo Serna. Let me look, I don't even, that issue is not on our agenda for tonight. No, we don't have anything concerning marijuana on the agenda for tonight. So you would have to wait until the time when we do, but I'm gonna ask first, I don't know if we have any items coming forward on marijuana. So I would think that would allow him the opportunity to speak tonight.
He could speak at any point on marijuana.
It's not a land use case. You can come forward. There's nothing on the agenda tonight, Mr. Serna. You're more than welcome. Come forward and give us your concerns on marijuana. Good evening.
Guillermo Serna, 14122, East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022. Gets confusing sometimes. All the awards on the nonprofits, people volunteering their time sometimes to give this community the health, direction, integrity, and rules and regulations, and trying to help. On the working session, when it came to the distance of locations for marijuana from a school building, kinda bothered me a little bit. When a moratorium was brought forth, it was kinda like taken down. And you know, when we had the Franklin, that's what helped the city a lot, and the rest of the state followed suit. So that was a good thing. We have board members that are city councilmen that served for children. Okay? We have people that have come in from outside to our community and became part of our community, and they're serving right now. We have some that have been here for a real length of time, when this city voted for the infrastructure to build. But it was for something greater than what I'm hearing. When it comes to our children and their safety and their ground to be able to be children, it should not be interfered with, regardless of what parents want. Yes, we have the law, but what has made that law work a little bit in the positive with marijuana has been the law of distance from our children. Keep that in mind. We have worked hard in past history to eliminate taverns because of what was happening. Yet sometimes, our children right now, with all the isms that they have to challenge, okay, at home, whether it be for drinking too much or whatever, okay? Now, they have this in their homes. The data, I did not hear anybody ask for data. How much is it going to cost our community for more policemen to enforce? How much is it gonna cost the people that don't know the rules and regulations of this? And the data is there now. We put this in place, but I think that the distance, you have to give it time before all of this comes in. Our children do not have to be put in danger because of what may be coming. And I think that all of you have that responsibility to our children, because it's not gonna be easy in what they have to face in their future. Whether, it doesn't make a difference. Like I said again, our children are sacred, because they are our future. They are your future. So please, when you discuss this, I know that I heard things that I won't say here, because it's important for you to ask. We had two more assistant judges, and I wonder why. And I'm beginning to put pictures together, because maybe the judge is gonna need more assistance with some of these cases that may be coming up. For more assistance from higher lawyers that understand what is coming with marijuana suits or whatever. So please, don't look at it as just one little item. Look at the whole picture when it comes to our children. Our schools don't need this right now. Our classrooms don't need this right now. Our teachers don't need this right now. They need time, and our children deserve to be in, brought up in an environment at least for eight, ten hours a day, where they can be themselves, away from the home, where there isn't any. Away from the streets, where there isn't any. Away, so that they can have the time to learn. And you know it as well as I know it, that kids at the high school can get into a lot of trouble, okay, if these things are close to them, and it will ruin their life. And some of the rules that you had in place worked well, but they were taken off. Give yourself time. If there is a moratorium and you said no, and this, I know that it was just a feeling, please, help these kids. It's not me, and I know that sometimes, like, here comes Guillermo. But all I'm asking you is that somebody's gotta speak for them, and for you to be aware of what the community is not doing. This room should be filled up, but it's not. So somebody's gotta say something, and that's all I'm saying. So thank you very much for your time, and do what you think has to be done.
Before you leave, I want to say a couple of things. First of all, when we had our study session, one, we had a study session concerning liquor licenses and setbacks. And I don't want anybody at home or anybody in the audience to be confused with what we're talking about with liquor licenses. There will be ordinances coming forward to the council for consideration. Nothing has been approved as of yet to lift some of the restrictions on how far away from one liquor store to another, or one tavern to another, and how far from a school to a liquor store. That ordinance will be forthcoming, and I don't know, maybe another, two meetings, probably about another, another month. But nothing has been approved at this time. We will consider that. When it comes to setbacks for marijuana-related businesses and our schools, there are setbacks in place that we, there's not a single person on this council, and I'm gonna speak for the whole council, that has any intention on changing any setback for marijuana at this time. So we are looking at, what do we do with liquor licenses in setbacks? We are not looking at marijuana and setbacks. However, I also know that part of your statement had to do with the moratorium or potential moratorium because of multiple businesses in one location, which is, I have to separate those for the audience and for the people at home, so that they understand what's going on, okay? So, but I, I know every council member up here understood what you were talking about, and I appreciate it when you come up and talk. So when you say, oh no, here comes Guillermo, every once in a while I think that, but it always turns out to be a good thing, Guillermo. And I gave you extra time tonight, because I gave everybody else extra time tonight.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. All right. That gets us through the citizens' communication list. Is there anyone in the audience who did not get a chance to sign up on the citizen communication list that would like to talk to the council for three minutes this evening? Seeing none. We're gonna move forward in our agenda. We need to approve the minutes of March 6th, 2017. I'm open for a motion. Councilwoman Carson.
Move to approve the minutes of March 6th, 2017.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 6th, 2017. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. So tonight, we have the consent agenda. There is only one item on the consent agenda. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Resolution 2017-38. Is there any discussion concerning that item? Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title of the consent agenda?
Resolution 2017-38, resolution approving a quick correction deed, quick claim deed with the Colorado Department of Transportation, related to ownership of State Highway 2, responsible acceleration of maintenance and partnerships ramp program.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on Resolution 2017-38? Seeing no one. I have a motion and a second, and the title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Move on, we're moving on to ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 2128. Is there anyone on the council that has any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and address the council on this ordinance? Seeing no one. I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2128. Councilwoman Carson.
Move to introduce ordinance 2128 on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Ordinance 2128, an ordinance establishing a senior commission and amending the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code relative to such commission.
Thank you. Need a roll call vote, please.
My light's not blinking. Okay, my light is blinking.
Thank you. For the record, ordinance 2128 is passed unanimously by the council this evening. Next, we move into presentations. We have the 2017 pavement maintenance program overview. I'd like to invite Maria DeAndrea forward to make her presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we were gonna present this to you in a study session, but we moved this to one of the regular city council meetings for the benefit of the public, so that they could get a little bit of background as well. So tonight, we'll go over a little bit of an overview of our overall program that was set up back in the fall of 2013. So we've got a good, this'll be our third year, full year, of implementing our new pavement management program. And then we'll go over the specific projects for 2017, and then follow up with some next steps and overall comments on the overall program. So with that, our philosophy is fairly simple. It's about completing the right repair in the right road at the right time. And what does that mean? It's really about, again, focusing our limited pavement maintenance dollars. You'll see, we're gonna spend just under $2 million in 2017, and how do we spread that to do as much good as we can? And that includes doing work on roads that look like they're in very good condition, so that we can keep them in that good condition. So our approach is that we cycle around the city in different areas, seven specifically, and I'll show a map in a minute. The blue areas are what we call routine maintenance, where we're going in, those, that's the work that staff actually does in performing crack repairs, wide crack repairs, crack sealing, pothole patching, that sort of thing. We do that ahead of the year, or when we do the green preventative maintenance. And that's typically what we've been doing lately, is the slurry seals, anything that kind of surface treatments of any kind. And then corrective maintenance is where we're getting deeper, so we're taking up pavement, replacing it, or going down, replacing utilities, and then having to replace the entire street section. As I mentioned, there's a seven-year cycle for the local neighborhood streets. This is a map that shows that. So we rotate those every year. This is our map for 2017, so again, the blue is the routine maintenance. We're focused, we'll be focused there this fall, so that in preparation for next year, the G area would be green, preventative. So we're doing that work one year ahead to get out and make sure that the underlying pavement that's already out there is, has the cracks filled, the potholes filled, so that when we do those surface treatments, which is the green, that pavement is ready to go and is prepped for that. So we did that last year in the B area, so that's green this year, and you'll see the areas that will be doing this in 2017. And then C, the orange area is corrective. So the intent is not that we do every street in these areas, just that that's where we're focused in for the particular year. And so as an example, you can see for 2018, now the, the blue area of G from 2017 is green now, because we're doing that slurry seal in those areas. And we continue that rotation around. The arterials and collectors are on their own schedule. So any of those more major streets where there's higher volumes have their own schedule. And we weighted those back in 2013, based on not only what the pavement condition was, but council directed us to take into some other factors, such as, was it near a school? Was it near a bus stop? And so those were weighted, and that's how we're progressing around the city. This is the plan, kind of on a large-scale view of what we're planning to do for 2017, and I'll show maps of each of these areas individually. But as you can see, what we've tried to do is, again, focus the neighborhood work down in, in, let me jump back, the B and C area, down there in the south and very southern portion of the city. But then we're also doing some of the arterials and collectors throughout the city, especially up north, work on Chambers Road. So again, I'll go into these specifically. I will mention the green here along 104th Avenue, as well as Quebec Parkway between 60th and 56th. Not all of that pavement will be repaired. We're just, again, as we've done over the last two years, is repair certain segments where those concrete panels are failing. So we've got, we know a couple of sections, both east and west of Highway 2, as well as a couple of sections down, I believe it's closer to Landmark, that need to be replaced. And then on Quebec, we haven't done any... And then on Quebec, we haven't done any pavement repair on that concrete down there, and we see, and you probably have experienced, some of those manholes are starting to lift. And so they're at a different elevation than the pavement around them, and we need to go back in, tie those in with rebar, and then repour the concrete around them. So again, not every, all of this section will be completed, just the portions that are in poor condition, that concrete pavement. So I'll jump right into the different areas. So again, this is preventative maintenance, down around the stadium and around the civic center here. So all those streets highlighted in yellow would receive a slurry seal treatment. And if you go out there, you can see, just like what we did in the parking lot a couple of years ago, the key is to seal in that pavement. They're still really good. All of these roads were constructed, you know, within the last 10 years, and we want to preserve and maintain that good condition that they're in. So providing a slurry seal seals out those environmental effects. It's a little bit dry, if you look at the pavement now, some of that asphalt or that, excuse me, the rock is starting to be exposed a little bit. That slurry seal will really set that back in. Similarly, this is 60th Avenue, west of Vasquez, so just for reference, here's the Wendy's right here. So that little section going out to the west before it turns to the south, we'll slurry seal that as well. Reconstructed relatively recently, and we want to maintain that good condition. And obviously, with these projects, they would all be, the striping would be replaced as well. 64th Avenue, so this, we're going from Quebec Parkway all the way to Kearney. We're going to actually do a mill and overlay, so that's why it's labeled as corrective. So we're going to mill up the very two-inch top layer of the asphalt, repair the cracks, and then we'll put a new asphalt, layer of asphalt down, and then replace all of the striping. This, because 64th Avenue is too far gone, so it really needs something more than just a slurry seal, just a preventative, something on the surface. We need to go deeper to correct some of those cracks, level it out, and provide a new surface out there. On 56th Avenue, we're actually going to do both treatments. So around the intersection with Vasquez Boulevard, going up to 56th Avenue and underneath I-270, that section is in relatively good condition, and we'll take that all the way out west of Vasquez as well, to the railroad tracks. That will, the yellow will all be slurry sealed as well. The green represents areas, and if you've driven this road, you know it very well, very poor condition. We've recently done some traffic counts out there that shows that that's 33% truck traffic is traveling on that road. Any typical of a, let's say, more like, another typical street, maybe not in Quebec, I'm trying to find, think of another example, but it's probably less than 10% truck traffic, so three times as high. One-third of the traffic out there is actually truck traffic. So really beating that asphalt down. And here, the mill would probably be very slight. We just want to level everything off, and then add the two inches to add more structural strength through that asphalt. Again, we're kind of combining both actions over here in the Adams Height neighborhood. Again, 68th Avenue is shown in green, that would receive a mill and overlay as well. Too far gone to really do a slurry seal, but we feel the neighborhood streets to the south there will all benefit from a surface treatment. And then we're also, since we're going to be rebuilding or rehabbing Colorado from 70th up to 72nd as part of our stationary improvements, we'll also pick up that little section on 71st up here in this contract, so that it looks like we've done kind of the whole area. On Chambers Road, so the picture on the left shows we'll do slurry seal down near the King Supers from about 104th up to roughly that entrance that goes into the King Supers site, and from there to the north, the green shows where we'll be milling and overlaying. Again, trying to add some structural strength out there because of the high volumes of traffic. We know that the traffic has increased, and we were able to get that, we're going to go to, hopefully try and get to 120th, but we were actually only able with the funds that we have to get to 114th Avenue. So that's shown at the limits on the north end here. Then we also, this is, on the right-hand side of the photo, shows the intersection of Chambers and East 100th Avenue. For whatever reason, I think maybe because of the design, or the way that it's, it's a little bit of a sag in that road, it's really, the pavement's deteriorated quite a bit. So we're going to go ahead and reconstruct or rehab that intersection right now. So I know one of our citizens has raised questions about taking this road further, or taking the mill and overlay all the way up to 120th, and as I'll walk through here, you'll see that we've tried to maximize the budget to the extent that we can, and was, we're just not able to include that. So you see here, the appropriation amount that was budgeted in the 2017 budget was 1.9 million. Of that, we're using just about $400,000 for the slurry seal, those yellow areas that I showed in the previous maps. Then 1.1 million is going into that mill and overlay. So it's a lot of money. That corrective really has, it's very expensive, and, but that's what we feel like we have to do to keep ahead of where we are with the streets. $170,000 would be the repairs that would go on to 104th Avenue and Quebec Parkway, any of those concrete panel work on the pavement. We haven't left ourselves a little bit of a contingency, about 5%, just in case something comes up. And then we will be conducting this year a citywide street rating, so that we know on a scale of 0 to 100, where do our streets rate now? Typically, you like to do that every three to four years. We have not done that since 2008. So we really need to benchmark again where we are, and see if we're going in that right direction. So that brings us essentially have spending that entire $1.9 million. So we use various outreach methods to communicate with the folks that this will affect. I think one of the most critical ones is doing the, especially within the neighborhoods, is setting up those variable message boards at the entrance points. We also do direct mailers and door hangers as we get closer to the work. And then, of course, we have our construction hotline, just in case anybody wants to call. We try and respond to that within 24 hours or less, so that people have one point of contact when they're trying to get answers. Our timeline, this has been successful for us in the past, is that we leave, when we set, when we issue these proposals to get bids, we allow a little bit of a window, so we don't expect them to turn, you know, come in the very next week after we award the contract and start the work immediately. Because there's relatively limited companies that do this work, especially the slurry seal, we want to give ourselves some time, let them fit us into their schedule, and we feel we get a better price by doing that. So the window is a little bit wide, and we want that. And then, once they get the bid, then we can work with them on the specifics of when their schedule allow them to come in, and then we'll communicate that out to the public. But relatively, the summer, the late summer months here into early fall is when we're planning all of the work. And again, we'll communicate the more specifics as we know that. I like this picture. I wanted to touch on this, just because it shows the slurry seal on the left side. I believe this was in the dunes. But you can see what we're trying to do with the line here. You can see that we've filled that wide crack that goes transversely across the street, but then we've also filled other areas here. So again, that prep work, getting ready for the slurry seal. And this was one of the efforts that we talked about last year when we came before you, was the idea of these streets in the dunes, and I believe Stillwater too, had already been crack sealed, or, excuse me, chip sealed a few years ago. So we wanted to see what would happen when we slurry sealed over the chip seal. And if you've driven out there, or noticed it, like I have, then you'd see, I mean, it's set up beautifully. So I really feel like, even though we're getting away from the chip seal, the money that we put into it has not been wasted. It really, you know, the slurry seal has helped to trap that remaining rock in. When we go into those areas in Reunion, I think it will, it will just end up just as beautifully as this. So I consider that a beautiful road. Few things that we did in 2016, so we're always trying to get better. It's not a stagnant program. The idea is, how can we build on that, get, learn from our mistakes, try and do more? And some of the things that we've done to try and get out ahead of it is working with our developer partners, and we've changed up the asphalt type that we're putting down in new residential streets. So Turnberry, Reunion, where else are we just recently putting in? Potomac Farms. We're putting in a different mix, and so it's a little bit less stiff, and that's to accommodate, so we don't get all that transverse cracking, or maybe as much transverse cracking as we have in the past. The asphalt type that we were specing previously was a little bit stiffer, meant for a higher level of traffic volume, and so I think we've successfully kind of hit maybe the middle, where it's a little bit more reactive to the type of traffic loads that we're getting in the residential streets, and there's no additional cost for the developer. So it's been a win-win. They've accepted that very readily. And so not only trying to fix things on the back end, but try and make them better, so as we accept these new roads, add more and more miles to our system, hopefully, we're getting a better product. I mentioned about the pilot program. I think that turned out really well over that older chip seal. We've also, last year, we implemented, we, before, when we did a mill and overlay, I think, previous years, we would just let the contractor take that material and dispose of it. Now we're saying, well, let's keep that. What, we, then we're going out and buying, like, road shouldering material. So instead, we get that, we get the milled asphalt, like, off of 120th Avenue last year. We have it milled, they bring it to our shop off of, or our loading facility off of Mill Road, and now we're using that, if you've seen around, we've been trying to shoulder all of the major streets, 120th, Potomac, we've done 96th Avenue, 88th, and so we're using that material back instead of paying additional for it. See, so next year, what we're planning to do, looking at some different options to the mill and overlay, there's another thing called in-place recycling, where you actually take up the milled material, mix it with new asphalt, and place it in the, in the single motion. Not so good for, like, a residential street where there's really tight corners, but a really wide street that's kind of out by itself is a really good option. So we'll be looking at that. Also researching, how can we stop utility cuts? So it breaks my heart when I see, you know, XL Energy, or somebody else cut into a brand-new street. So how can we reward them potentially by first sharing, not only sharing our map, but then somehow incentivizing them to potentially do their work and plan it ahead of us? So what that might be is, maybe making them put in a lesser thickness of asphalt if we know we're coming in the very next year. That way, it saves them money, and we can live with it for a year until we get there. And/or, if they're not willing to do that, increasing the, how much they have to repave if they cut into it shortly after we do do something. And then finally, we've been exploring with the city of Brighton is combining contracts. So the more quantity you have, typically, then the better price you get. So last year, I believe, they didn't even get a price or proposal on doing some of their slurry seal work, because their quantity was too low. Well, is there a way that we can work together, since they're relatively close, put one contract out, and then do both cities at the same time? So we're going to explore that. We have updated our five-year map, so these, the different colors show the work that will be done, just on the arterials and collectors, over the next five years. And this is subject to change as we, as our money changes, as the prices change. We have seen increases in the unit prices over the last three years. So, but at least this gives us something to communicate with the utility companies, and help to communicate with the public as well about when we might be in their area. So again, we started this in 2014. The new program was adopted in the fall of 2013. So over the last, including 2017 now, we'll have spent about $6.86 million on pavement maintenance. As you can see, we didn't do any corrective maintenance that first year, but corrective maintenance, that mill and overlay, has constituted a very large part of our contracts over the last three years. And this graph just shows, so how many miles are we getting, kind of that bang for our buck, or that return on investment? So you can see, it's really beneficial to put more money into the blue and the green, because it buys us more. So we're only touching 13.7 miles with the $4.3 million. Now again, we need to do that, but we also need to focus, because by adding more to the green, or continuing to do the green and the blue, which really work hand-in-hand, it helps to keep those orange dollars from being as high as they might need to be. And then finally, I'll just leave you with some benchmarking data. Oftentimes, you know, we get asked, well, where are we in relation to other people? Are our roads worse or better? How much are other people spending? And this is something that was put together by the Colorado Asphalt Payment Association, and it shows us, you know, and I didn't put everybody, all the cities in here, but it shows Commerce City down there, you know, we shoot for about a, between a 60 and a 70, and at that rate, we're spending about $3,500 per lane mile. So obviously, certainly not anywhere in that top tier, but I think in keeping with our program and the direction that city council has given us, is that we're not going to go all crazy with spending, but we're hanging in there. So just wanted to share that with you. So finally, I'll open it up to questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria. You know, we know that there's a lot of older roads that still have to have some attention, and it's great to see this program, that this council has helped build, to start putting more dollars into pavement. The one thing you brought up that I thought was interesting was the discussion about opting into, trying to get utility companies to not cut our roads. And I remember back many, many years ago, and I think it was before any of the other council members were here, and it came up, and we said, okay, one of the things we're doing is, we're not going to allow anybody to cut the new roads. Five years, no street cuts. And the Water District said, fine, don't sell any more taps. And so it kind of kicked it back in our direction, because we know we're building tower road, know we don't want to see a bunch of street cuts, but then again, we want to attract businesses, and when the guy that was here earlier that wants to do an Italian restaurant, if it happens to end up on one of these roads, we want him to cut it. And so there's a give and take when it comes to not wanting that road cut. I would say, yes, it's great to have an ongoing relationship and try to promote getting everything in that can be put in that is in the foreseeable need. But then there is, there is the aspect of, well, we didn't realize it was going to be McLean Services, and we didn't realize you needed a three-inch tap, and we only put a two-inch tap. So there are some variables, and we have to bear with that. So I want to, I want to make sure that we take that into account when you're, when you're working with the agencies that we have to work with for utilities. Otherwise, looks like you've got a good program set up for this next year. I would ask, because I know some of the roads that, I, I'm speaking for myself, get pounded on for regular messaging over, over the year, are some of the roads in the Irondale area that the city ended up annexing quite some time ago, and we have some new development in that area, and just the fact that some of those roads, we know, are almost, well, they are dirt, or they were, they were asphalt at one time, and they're dirt now, because they've just wore down to nothing. And I, I don't know, I would like to ask, what do you foresee on some of that replacement in that, in that area? Because they're, they're hot button items that we constantly get pounded on. And when, and as a dual part to that question, if we're not going to get to getting something done pavement-wise, can we bump up our surface for the dirt road to stop the dust and stuff, because that's most of the concern? And I'm trying to think of what road it is, it's like 80, 84th, 85th, somewhere in there.
Eighty-sixth, yeah.
Eighty-sixth. And we get hammered both sides of Rosemary from businesses, and I thought, well, if you can answer to me, because I know at one time you were looking for a new product and a new distributor, and so I would get calls, and just wondering what we're going to do to help try to satisfy some of those concerns in that area while we're waiting for them to come up on that list.
Yeah, let me talk to, speak to that. So originally, when we set the program up, we had talked about improved streets and unimproved streets, and roads such as the roads in Irondale, things like, oh, some of the streets down in, especially that, like, Ivy down there, south of 270, what we call unimproved streets that really don't have any drainage. Brighton Road would be classified in there. We had about 16 to 19 miles of that. And what we wanted to And what we wanted to do was say, hey, we need to take care of these in some other way through the regular CIP process. And unfortunately, I just don't think that they'll ever rise to the level to compete with other projects. So we are looking to try and incorporate some of that work. I did come up with a cost estimate for overlaying the streets in Irondale, but I think that was in the range of, gosh, several hundred, I would say almost $700,000, I think. So, long story short, I think we're, we're trying with 56th Avenue, we, you can see here on the map, we have included some type of work on Brighton Road between 104th and 112th because we simply can't, don't have the money probably in the CIP process. So we're having to use some of the money within the regular pavement management program to try and address some of these streets. And is it somewhat of a Band-Aid? Probably, but I, I don't know if there's a lot of other funding sources to come with that.
If I might add, city council did fund a longer-range study for the Irondale neighborhood that community development is leading. They will be before city council in the study session on June 26th, as sort of a kickoff meeting for that study to look at long-range infrastructure needs in the Irondale neighborhood and some options for how to fund it. Everybody understands in general the needs. So we're trying to get our arms around quantifying the needs and then talk through some potential ways to fund it. So that'll kick off June 26th.
I have one other question, was Chambers Road between 104th and 112th. I know that's on the list for next year for, is it this year or next year?
The section from 104th to 114th will do this year.
This year. I know at some point in time, development's going to take place, and we're looking at widening that and everything else. When you start planning things, are you also looking at when anticipation for development to occur, to get the public improvement dollars from that development to tie to, so that we're not, and I bring this up because when you, when you go down by River Run and you drive down Peoria Street and you see the cold joints down the center where we have the old asphalt on one side, the new asphalt on the other side, and the cold joints that occur, so that it creates, you know, and I'd rather take the money and put our repairs and build one road. And so I don't, I know we've all talked about what's she going to do with this piece of property? When do they anticipate development to occur? I just want to try to do our best to time that to where the dollars are used in the best way possible to make sure that we end up with the best product for our residents possible. And so if it's a year difference or, or two years where it's manageable, that's one thing. If it's going to be a while and that road needs to be replaced, which I know Chambers is in pretty bad shape, then let's get it replaced. I just want you to also take into consideration some timing on what our planning department would be able to, to signify as development that we will anticipate happening in a short period of time.
Certainly, yeah. I think that's definitely a consideration we need to take into account.
Thank you. Mr. Mackel Downey.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Maria. I think it's, you know, it's nice to see the project really taking shape. I mean, we talked, we put this together about what we hoped would become a rhythm, and certainly the graphs helped to, to depict that. I've got a few questions. Let me just start with the big one out of the gate, which is, given the spending levels currently in the program and what we've seen accomplished thus far, where do you see the trajectory of the program? Meaning, are we, are we taking big enough bites out of the things that have to be caught up on so that we can put more energy into those preventives and the sort of, you know, what was it, the green and the, get to the right graph here, to the blue and the green as opposed to the orange, right? So where are we at in terms of those curves over time? My, my concern is, if we don't spend the right amount, it may, it may need to be more over a shorter period of time to sort of get the right longer-term rhythm set. I mean, obviously, you, you commented about getting some of the, the pavement formulas changed so that over time, right, those areas should be less of an issue, we hope. But does that, does the question make sense?
Yeah, I, I think what, what will help us determine that is doing that overall
The updated.
Rating again.
Yeah.
So we'll be able to say between 2008 and 2017, how we changed. I was guessing when I, that benchmarking data at the end, you know, are we at 69 overall?
Right.
I don't know. You know, I would say we're probably pretty close. But I think before I can answer that successfully, I'd have to have that data. But generally, I'd say we're falling a little bit behind just because we have seen over the last three years, the prices increased so significantly, especially for asphalt and just the labor, I think, in general, is really driving the costs up. So what we thought we could get back in 2013, or the amount of pavement that we could repair is, is not the quantity that we're getting now.
Right. And will that study be done in time for this year's budget conversations? Or will it come in later? Because I guess where I'm going is, how much of that information would we have come budget discussions as this year unfolds to be able to potentially talk about, you know, turning the dial in one way or the other on that?
Yeah, they, we're, we're hopefully going to get that request for proposals out within the next two months. So I would say we probably would have that data by about August or so.
Okay.
So yeah, I think that would fit in nicely with the budget timing, timing.
Okay. So let me jump to my other ones and I'll throw the, the mic to somebody else. The mayor started asking about Chambers, and I know you talked about the inability to go past 104, or 114th. If my memory and Google is correct, really, the, the road character changes at about 116th at our new park. What would it take to do those extra couple of blocks so that we have, really from that intersection down? Because my, my memory is, the quality of the road is radically different from 116th to 120th, and it's two lanes in each direction. But at 116th on, it, it in general is in pretty poor shape. And it would be odd to me to have sort of a pretty good section, you know, south of 120th, and then a really bad section, and then a, an improved section. And so it, it would seem to me that if we can, while we have these resources out there, if we need to do a special appropriation to help give a little extra, whatever that number might be, to make sure that we can at least get to 116th, that seems to make sense to me. So I just wanted to throw that part out there. And then also on Chambers, at 100th, where we'll do some work at that intersection. This question ties into the update that you contributed to the city manager's report this week, following on the, the question about Chambers and responsibility for that ultimate expansion. It was a little sad to read the update as it, as it came forward. I guess the question to me is, knowing that that will ultimately be our responsibility to improve Chambers through that segment, that's going to put it out their ways. But the, the capacity concerns on that roadway are not going to go away. They're only going to increase. And so as we get into that intersection at 100th, what opportunity do we have, to the mayor's point about, do we invest immediately in 100th and Chambers? Or do we need to find out what it would cost to do some limited improvements to that intersection? Because right now, if somebody wants to turn east on 100th off of Chambers, you can't. Or they're doing a sort of, you know, wiggle around that car that's trying to turn left and using the intersection of 100th, you know, almost as if you're turning into the neighborhood and then jogging around them. And they also use the private driveway just a little bit further south to do the same thing. And so in the same way that we bought time on Highway 2 by improving intersections to improve capacity, I, I would be curious to hear what options we have to make some key investments in that Chambers corridor before we go and, and do some level of improvements this summer that would potentially need to be disrupted to fix that capacity. Because again, if we can't solve that road, you know, for some time, that's, we need to figure out how to make some interim steps. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think what kind of surprised me, and I have to go back and look at the transportation plan every so often, is that only, Chambers is only called to be a two-lane road from 104th to 96th, not a four-lane. So I think what we have to look at, to your point, is should that classification be changed? Given the amount of traffic that's already on there, how can we, you know, look at the future and say, does it need to be a four-lane road in the future and plan for that?
Yeah, that, that's kind of my thought. So thank you for those two. And my last question, when we talk about the improvements in Area G, the, the work that'll occur in Area G this summer, and the cracks and, and other, other items that need to be done in anticipation of slurry next year, one of the areas of concern, and I think it's similar to the area that Mr. Douglas had originally brought to our attention on the entrance of Landmark, up the little hill where we had some sort of waving and, and pavement and subsurface failures. If you look at the, the road around South Lawn Park, we have a lot of sort of wave, and that's true of segments of Reunion Parkway as it enters that portion of the neighborhood. So the question, I guess, would be, to what extent did those, that degree of failure begin to be addressed this year versus just cracks? Because my concern, much like we saw when we did the original chip seal, was we just sort of covered the, you know, the issues. And some of those have exacerbated, as we've seen on South Lawn Parkway where, whether it's the plow or otherwise, has now sheared away, and now we're into the, the subsurface. So on some of those areas, I'd be keen to see how aggressive your plan calls for relative to what really might be needed before we come back and do a slurry next year.
Sure. And, and one of the points I forgot to mention, so we did this pretty extensively in Bell Creek last year, as well as in Eagle Creek neighborhoods, where we actually did the asphalt repairs before we did the slurry seal.
Okay.
So it was part of the same contract. They had to cut out certain sections.
In, in the same year.
It was much smaller areas, like in Bell Creek, but we did that, so we did that pavement work before we came in and did the slurry seal.
Within the same year as opposed to?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, great. That's it. Thanks very much.
Councilman Diaz.
Thank you, Maria. I know how thoughtful you have been in terms of making sure that we fix the right roads, that the, making sure that we meet budget and all that stuff. And I appreciate you referencing the resident earlier. As she alluded to, there was a resident who inquired about having Chambers basically paved, repaired, whatever it was, all the way from 104th to 120th. And, and one of the issues that he had brought up is that he has a wife who has chronic neck and back pains, and so the roads have not been quite friendly to her in terms of driving through that. And so I do appreciate you bringing that up. And I know Councilman Mackel Downey brought it up, and that's why, this is great, because he makes a really good segue in terms of that. And actually, the park sits on 117th as opposed to 116th. So now we're looking at 114th to 117th, as Councilman Mackel Downey had suggested, all the way to 120th. So we're looking at three to six blocks. So just curious, Maria, how much more do you think that would cost to expand, whether it's another three blocks or six blocks to continue that Chambers Road paving?
Yeah, so I calculated the area from 114th all the way up to 120th. It was about another $122,000. So if you figure half of that would still be about $60,000 to get us to about 117th or so, 116th.
And I guess I'm just kind of throwing it out there, especially since Councilman Mackel Downey brought it up, of maybe it's kind of worth looking into, seeing where else we can find the funds to kind of finish that road, whether it's halfway up to 117th or at least 117th to 120th. Because I also know, since you did reference the wanting to make sure things are kind of taken care of in bunches, you talked about wanting to do contracts with the city of Brighton, for example. If the resources are already there and if we're already working down Chambers, why not try to mitigate the issue? And I, I would like to challenge staff to kind of look into that, to see if that's possible, if that's feasible. Or I know it's not into the plans until 2019, but even if it was expedited to 2018 instead of 2017, just, I'd love for you guys to kind of explore those options, just to see what we could do. But I think this year makes the most amount of sense, as Councilman Mackel Downey pointed out, just based on the fact that the resources are already there. But really, thank you. I know that he was really appreciative of, you know, you've spoken to him the last couple of months, it sounds like, so he's very appreciative.
And, and you know, I, I probably failed to say this as well, but we haven't bid anything out yet. So, you know, we, we look at last year's prices, or we see those trends, we bump it up just a little bit to account for inflation and such. So let's see where the numbers come in, and maybe we, we can do it within the 1.9. I just didn't want to overpromise.
Right.
So we'll, we'll see once we actually get the bids in where we come in at.
That's what I appreciate. That's why I know how thoughtful you are in all this, but I just wanted to challenge staff to kind of consider that and look into that. So, thank you.
And Maria, I would recommend that, once you do find out if there is a shortfall, I'd like to speak for council, have that come to a study session, at least give us some consideration on tying that piece in so that we don't have, from good to bad to good again. All right? Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Thanks, Maria. Appreciate that. This is great to see how things are laid out for the next several years. And just on a note here, we went up Chambers from 104th all the way up. Now we get to the intersection, 112th and Chambers. And I know that's part of the other package for the rec center. And a, a portion of that, now, is that going to be expanded in that, in that intersection? Because we had that little slight hill there.
Yeah.
On the southeast side. But just if we could open that up a bit, so it's almost like the intersection here, we had 104th and, and Tower, even though it comes off of two lanes, but it comes up to a full intersection for, you know, for later on improvements. And, and that'd be great to, to see that be done at that time. And then maybe from 112th down just slightly south of 112th and Chambers. You know, those road conditions are, I mean, I drive that quite a bit. I'm not sure if we could flip that so that a big portion of that gets used from 120th down to 112th instead? And then since, you know, there's going to be expansion on, on Chamber, just, just to save that and just maybe go on the, maybe just plug in the areas that are really bad. Because it's not like it was on 88th or so, you know, Buckley. So maybe we could flip that and then have, because you haven't, haven't gone out for bid yet, and have that, the green area come from 120th and come down, and maybe shorten where King Supers is, up to Heartland instead. Since there's neighborhoods on both sides, when you go north versus coming south, you, you have more wear and tear from people coming in from both sides of the neighborhood than you do just the one side.
We did look at that. So our street staff, our engineering staff, and myself all drove those sections. And that, that pavement between south of 112th is pretty bad. So that's, we, we actually weighed that. Should we put the money into the, you know, and then of course, north of 112th, you've got, or north of 116th, you've got the wider four-lane section. So there's more pavement. But we really felt that was in, if you will, relatively better condition than the south section of Chambers. So while, again, we will certainly look at trying to take that all the way up, I, I still would recommend keeping with the south piece.
Okay. And then the repurposing of Buckley, 88th, and Buckland, 96th. Now I know that Tower and 88th is closed, they're working on the intersection there. Do they plan to open that back up or just going to close it off completely until Tower's done?
Yeah, so they are doing, like you said, the work at the intersection of Tower and 88th. So 96th Avenue is open all the way to Tower Road now. Once they finish the intersection work, we will open up Buckley and 88th again, if not only, it will not be a detour anymore, but people can take that as an alternative if things back up on Tower. The Republic Services at the Tower landfill has specifically asked that we keep it open for the duration of the project to accommodate their trash trucks, which take that route. That way they're not making sort of a Z on Tower Road, and instead they can come straight across Tower at 88th.
Okay. So that, so Buckley and 96th is going to remain, you know, once that open, that, that light's going to go back in operation, correct?
Correct. And then at the end of the project, we will remove the signal that's at Buckley and 96th, and then remove that portion of Buckley.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that. Mr. Amador.
Thank you, Ms. DeAndrea, for your presentation. I look at Area D, and I'm most concerned with the Irondale area. And in our presentation, we talk about the right repair, the right road, and the right time. And I know that some of our residents in the Irondale area were annexed in years ago to the city, and we've had some limited improvements. I know that we've filled many potholes, done dust mitigation, those types of things. And I did hear that we are going to have a study session on what the improvements could be to those roads, along with the drainage as well. So I'm excited to hear that. However, I don't really see anything on the presentation that talks about However, I don't really see anything on the presentation that talks about the implementation of what we could do to make some of those roads a permanent, more fix. That being said, that we know that we have some trucking industries going in there, we have the Steel Company going in there, and what that area is going to start to look like for both the residents and the businesses that are, are locating in that area. So I'll just kind of be brief, but I do want to keep it on the radar, just as the mayor brought it up. Something will have to be done in the near future, or the, and I'm looking forward to see what that looks like. So, thank you.
Mr. Mackel Downey?
Thanks. Forgot about two things. One, on the mill, the millings, the reuse of the millings. I know you and I had talked about that some time ago. I, I just wanted to make a specific point of complimenting you and staff. It seems like every time I drive down a road, I see evidence of those millings going to work, and, and an additional segment of shoulder has been improved. And I just want to make sure you and your staff know that it's seen and it's appreciated. It, it's amazing what, what effect that has on the psyche to see evidence of that little bit of work. It changes the feel of that section of the road. It, it makes it obvious that somebody's paying attention. I think it's made a huge difference on 96th. And just in terms of feeling like that road is safer, it can be a daunting road to drive at certain times of day, and having a visible, you know, more trustable, you know, segment of shoulder is, is a comfort. Especially as we see the increased folks using, whether it's Potomac or otherwise, off of 96th. Yeah, I noticed, I think most recently, some of the additional shouldering that had been done on 120th. And so it's, A, it's nice to see. But I think on the other side of that, it would be great for you guys to be able to sort of toot your own horn in terms of, what have the benefit, what's the benefit been to the city in terms of retaining that, right? Because to your point, we let the vendor take that in the past, and certainly they didn't just throw it away, right? That gets repurposed, they make money off of it, so they made money off of sort of on two fronts. I think it would be great to have some quantification of what that's, the benefit of that to the community, right? By retaining those millings, we're not, A, going out and buying more material, you know, I assume the cost of having that pile sit there is relatively low as we own that piece of dirt. But just the ability to do that outside of some special procurement process, like, we don't have to write a plan that says, we're going to go do shoulders, right? As you've got capacity and you have material, you can go do shoulders. And that, that's a huge advance to me, that we didn't necessarily talk about in the, in the plan when we put it together a few years ago, but it's a reality of the plan now. And I think it's been most evident over this last year, year and a half. So I, I wanted to make sure that that didn't go without comment. So thank you.
All right. Seeing no others, thank you, Maria, for the update.
Thank you.
All right. Next item. Purchase of additional 4A water. I'm going to invite City Man, the Deputy City Manager, Roger Tinklerberg, forward. He's going to make a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Good afternoon.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Turned myself off. All right. During the last presentation, I could feel the back of my head heat up. I'm sure the Finance Director was thinking about revoking my honorary membership in the Finance Department, because we're looking at spending more money, and here I am asking for more money. This is regarding 4A water that the Water District is proposing to sell. We had basically, well, we, we received approval from City Council to purchase two blocks of water, one in 2016 and one earlier this year in 2017. This presentation is regarding an additional block of water. We do not have the money in the Water Acquisition Fund currently to pay for this. However, we have the potential to use a lease purchase structure to purchase this water. And what this would do then is it, it would obligate the future revenue flow in the Water Acquisition Fund to fund upfront a large purchase. So I'll run through this fairly quickly. So it's the same type of deal as we talked about before, in terms of we'd be purchasing 4A water, the Water District would turn around and use that money then to buy that large block of augmentation water, which we've discussed with you previously. So moving on through, this is all part of that 3,600 equivalent residential units that are being made available through South Adams County Water and Sanitation District. And as I mentioned, we've purchased 265 ERUs, I'm sorry, in 2016, and then you've just recently authorized an additional 1, 1,700,000 to purchase another 261. And the note that I want to be clear with everyone is, this is at a discounted price, whereas what we purchased in 2016 was at full price. And the difference is the connection fee that, that they charge as part of the ERU cost as well. And so we're able to purchase more ERUs with this money at this time. We estimated the additional ERUs needed for future city facilities to be 2,300. And as I mentioned, this sale is without the connection fee of 1,650 included. And so at that discounted price, we will have purchased, depending on if we can get that 2016 number adjusted to go with the discounted price, it'll be between 577 and 589 ERUs. And so that would leave somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,710 to 1,723 that we would need to be able to build out city facilities over the next however many years it takes for the community to reach build out. So we have seen annual revenue of approximately $500,000 in the Water Acquisition Fee Fund. And so using that, we know that we can fund over 6.5 million. One of the banks I talked to looked like we could go, you know, even above 7 million. So that's part of what we want to look at, is how much exactly do we need, and what's the price going to be in terms of our negotiation? And how does that look in terms of the funding mechanism that we would go with down the road? So this would enable us to purchase at least 1,000 ERUs, and so that would leave 700 to be purchased sometime in the future. So this would really position us for having the water that we need for future parks, for future buildings that, that are needed for, you know, the city's own facilities. If we do not purchase, well, let me back up. If the augmentation water is not purchased by South Adams County, then the 4A water in the future would not become available, or would no longer be available. And that 4A water is critical for the ultimate build out of the community. So it's a win-win in terms of the city obtaining the, the water it needs for facilities, as well as the Water District being able to purchase the augmentation water needed for the community. The augmentation water, as we told you before, is the largest block of augmentation water that's been available on the South Platte River for many years. And so the irrigation district people that are selling this are talking in terms of 1,000 acre feet being available now, and with the possible, potential possibility of additional acre feet being available in the future. So this would really position South Adams County Water and Sanitation District very well for being able to purchase additional augmentation water as well. And our purchase of 4A water enables them to turn around and purchase the augmentation water. So it's, it's a related transaction in that sense. We have some options. One would be to use cash. Now, we have approximately 4 million available in the general fund from the 2016 fund balance. And I say approximately because we don't know exactly until the audit is completed. The only, there's several problems with that. One is, we don't know exactly what's available. Number two is, it takes away money from other projects that you may have in mind, because that money is often used in the following year for capital projects of one type or another. So again, it, it limits your flexibility. The only advantage is, there's no debt risk with it. Then on the other side of the coin is, we have various types of debt that we could enter into, but really only two are viable. Bonds are not recommended, because, A, it costs a fair amount of money, so you want a large block of bonds when you go out to the market. Otherwise, that cost per dollar that you're gaining is, is not a good ratio. We could do certificates of participation, that's where the buildings are used as collateral. However, we also have the third option, which is a lease purchase, where the water rights themselves serve as the collateral. So I'll talk a little bit more about those. The certificates of participation would require at least one of our existing facilities to be used as collateral. The problem with that is that then you can't use that, again, on a different project and use it as collateral for, you know, raising money for a different type of capital improvement program or project. Again, you know, using additional debt, it could negatively impact our bond rating, and then the opportunity cost is what I mentioned. Now, the third option is the lease purchase. And one of the banks told me that a 10-year interest rate would be in the 2.5% to 2.75% rate, which is a really good rate. However, it's going to take more than 10 years to repay it, so once we issue a request for proposal, we'll find out how the deal really can be structured. But this gives us a good indication that we're able to, to get a fairly attractive rate out of them. So there's been 1,034 ERUs of 4A water that's been sort of, if you want to call it, firmed up by the fact that some of this augmentation water that they're proposing to purchase has already been converted in water court. So we know there's no risk with that water going through water court. The other, the remaining water, they will have to take through water court. There are a couple of risks going this way. One is that in a recession, there may not be enough water acquisition fee revenue, and then we would have to cover that shortfall from the general fund, you know? So that, that is a real risk. Another risk is, again, what I mentioned earlier, the continued use of debt instruments could negatively impact our underlying bond rating. There is no opportunity cost, you know? With this, this money is dedicated solely for purchase of water for city facilities. So in that sense, you know, there, there is a real benefit from using the water acquisition fee. So knowing that we can defer the connection fee on the current proposed sale, I've gotten preliminary verbal commitment from the Water District that they would honor that for our, retroactively to our 2016 purchase as well. So that would gain us another 63.8 ERUs. And the reason that's beneficial is the, the escalation on the connection fee has been much less than on water rights themselves. And you'll see that in the next presentation, when I do that one on the Water Acquisition Fee Escalator. So what we're asking for is that you give staff direction to indicate whether you have any interest in purchasing additional ERUs at the discounted price. And also, I'm assuming then, if you said yes to that, that you would want us to convert the connection fee in 2016 to the additional ERUs. But before we ask for your direction, what I would ask is, would you be willing to amend the agenda, go to executive session? Because our water rights attorney has additional information about the deal itself, the, the transaction. And then when you come out of executive session, you'll be fully informed and know whether you want to approve this or not, if that's, meets with your approval now. All right. Now's a good time to go into executive session. I'm open for a motion in a second to enter it into an executive session pursuant to 24-6-402, Pairs 4, Pairs A, and Pairs E, for the purpose of considering potential acquisition of property interest, Pairs Water, and determining positions, development, developing strategies, and instructing negotiators regarding potential water transactions. Mr. Mackel Downey?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and we are now in executive session. Please bear with us. There's very little left in the meeting, but we will be back out to formally close the meeting and do our reports.
I'm calling this first.
Okay? Looking at 30 to 45 minutes for the executive session.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and we are now in executive session. Please Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and we are now in executive session. Please bear with us. There's very little left in the meeting, but we will be back out to formally bear with us. There's very little left in the meeting, but we will be back out to formally close the meeting and do our reports. close the meeting and do our reports.
[inaudible] [inaudible]
Okay. Looking at 30 to 45 minutes for the executive session. Okay. Looking at 30 to 45 minutes for the executive session.
Mine's working in it.
Mine's working.
Am I on?
Yep.
Now I am. Let me take a shot at it and see how far off I get, Mr. Sheasley. I would move that council direct staff to proceed with the proposed acquisition of additional foray water and explore the lease purchase option terms to help facilitate said transaction.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion as second to purchase, move forward and exactly what Mr. McAlton said. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I want to thank our outside counsel, Mr. Xylis, for all of his efforts on this, and I know it's a work in progress, but we'll look forward to the next update. Thank you very much. All right. Let me see. Water acquisition fee annual escalator. Invite Roger, who's already at the table, to kick that off.
Thank you, sir. So, the water acquisition fee was discussed at the beginning of the year, well, actually at the end of 2016, and we started looking at obtaining additional information. And so, the purpose for tonight's presentation is to obtain your direction on the annual inflator for that fee, because currently, the fee is frozen for 2017 and 2018. When we prepared the long-range financial plan in the early 2000s, water for the future city facilities was identified as a major unfunded future obligation. And so, in 2003, Ordnance 1402 established the fee and set the annual escalation rate at 10% per year. As I mentioned, it's now frozen temporarily for these two years, and January 1st of 2019, it will go back to 10%, unless we take action. So, in researching what's been out there in terms of escalators, I found information that in the western United States, water rights have actually inflated at 9.4% per year, and that's compounded annually. And then, digging a little deeper, trying to find information specific to our region, found information that the South Platte River Valley water rights inflated at 8.8% per year. So, the western United States included California, Oregon, Washington, as well as the, you know, mountain states. And so, this is South Platte River specifically. But in talking to the mayor, he pointed out, well, that would include the Colorado Big Thompson, and that has inflated significantly more rapidly than water rights in this area from ditch companies. So, dug a little bit deeper, and the information for this entire area does include the Colorado Big Thompson, but it also includes groundwater. It includes effluent from wastewater treatment plants. So, it's a variety of water types in that number. And so, yes, it includes that one, but again, groundwater, if you've been following any of that news, groundwater is becoming tougher and tougher to extract, particularly in the Denver-Julesburg basins and those that are deeper, because that water table keeps falling. So, it seems like 8.8% would be reasonable. However, we can get a report, a research report, from an organization called West Water, specific to the Denver area, so it would not include the Colorado Big Thompson, and that would cost $4,850. So, our choice is, we can go with 8.8%, which is an aggregation of this area, or we could go with that special report at a cost of $4,850. So, I'm recommending that we go with the 8.8%, but again, the choice is councils, it's a policy decision.
You know, as we talk about this and you look at that, Colorado Big Thompson water has escalated at a much higher rate than groundwater. And when it comes to what South Adams has and uses for our community, and the reason why we end up with hard water, we get the 4,000 acre feet from Denver, we got 5,000 acre feet through Freiko, the Freiko deal, but most of all of our other water is well water. And the good news is that the new horizontal well for Phase 4 is going to produce a lot of water. Downside is still going to have hardness. I know the hardness is South Adams, a South Adams issue, and they're going to have to figure out a way to deal with that. I think the 8.8% is probably still a little steep, only because, over the years, if you look at that, and we've kept in 10% every year up to now, we've raised it at a much higher escalator than what actuality is. I want to be fair to our constituents as well, and part of saying that is, we know we've got, this all came out in the fee study that we did. And we know we've got the fire districts coming and everything else, and I wanted to make sure that we also keep in mind the fact that we have to stay competitive, especially knowing we're going to face some discussions with the fire district. So, with all due respect, I don't think you're offline there, Roger, but at the end of the day, I would like to see it be a little less than the 8.8%, just so that I've got something when we go back to South Adams to say, you know what? We really need you to fix some of the inline, commercial stuff and other things to stay competitive. And so, it's hard if you don't practice what you preach kind of thing. That's the only reason I bring it up, so I would like to see it a little bit lower, but I worked with eight other members, and I'm interested to see what they have to say. Mr. Bullock?
I'm not that knowledgeable on water and everything like that, and I look at the costs for the West Water research of $4,800, and I say to myself, okay, say we were to get that research, spend the money for it and get it, and it says nine. We just, I mean, we're, I'm trying to understand what is the best way to go, and does anybody else you know have that research? Does the water department have it? And where you can say, hey, let me look at your book, you know, it's like cheating at a test, you know?
I've reached out to a number of organizations and have not been able to obtain any other information other than from this West Water research. And that's where I obtained, you know, for western United States, 9.4% in one of their reports, and then in another report, found the information for the South Platte River Valley. So, but, yeah, I've reached out to a number of organizations, several that the mayor mentioned, haven't got a response from them, so people I've talked to said, no, we don't keep that information, so finding the aggregated information is tough.
Okay. Are we under time constraint to find this information out? When would we want to implement this?
We've got two years. This is on hold for two years.
Right. We have time.
Oh, okay. Well, then, just myself, and it's just like Sean said, there's eight other members here, I would do the recommendation of getting the report, because then it would put us in a position where we, and probably the report would only be good for one year, and everything would change, but at least we would have an accurate recording of how the fees are for that one year, so we could find if we're in line, and we could get in line with the fees. And basically, another thing Sean said was, go to our other partners and say, you know, this is why we're doing this, this is what the report says, but we're even going to go at a lower rate or something like that. But that's my recommendation, just coming from me. Thank you.
Mr. McAlton?
Thank you. I think you both raised some great points. I think the bottom line, I think, given what we see coming in on the fee right now, roughly half a million dollars in the current frame, $4,800 is nothing in terms of relative cost. I would say that it's a no-brainer to get the study. What I'd like to understand about what that's going to tell us, so I don't think I'm getting one thing and we get another, the mayor made an interesting point about not wanting to, like, maybe bring that fee back a little bit because we perhaps have been over inflating. I would like to make sure that we have a range of data that we are able to look at that shows the trend from roughly the time that we implemented our fee to now, and some projection, because I think the thing at the other end of this is, why are we gathering this fee? Right? It's to purchase water. And we know that water doesn't get cheaper over time, it gets scarcer over time, and hence, costs more over time. So, I would, we've paused this fee, we can say without hesitation to any of our partners that we took seriously the findings of the study, and we put a pause on any escalation for two years. And that we've now gone and will do this West Water research report, ideally, should we all agree to that, and that what we come back with, I think, needs to be the fee, right? Not hedged in some way because we might have collected more over time. I think we collected what we thought was right, or what council at that time set was right. And arguably, it's become an incredible tool for us that, had it not been put into place, we would have been and would be in a very different place today. So, I'm, I want to make sure that this study that we give back gives us the right information to help make a good, wise decision. But on the other hand, I could also make the argument that the analysis that you've done thus far in terms of, you know, that 9.4 and 8.8% seems relatively defensible, but if I channel my inner city attorney, I think the study puts us in a better position to defend more rigorously whatever decision we ultimately make.
And just to follow up on that, I would agree with that. I think it'd be great to, for the $5,000, I think, is a great deal for us to have that comfort of knowing. The other good thing is, this is one of those fees where council can literally manipulate this year by year. And the downside, yeah, it was great, we put it into place because we knew we were going to be needing to buy water, and it worked. Downside is councils have changed over that time, and everybody forgot it's going up 10% every year, and pretty soon, you go, wow, we're way out of range with other municipalities, and that's why we needed to hold. So, it's just dialing it in. So, I think, you know, Councilman McAlton is right, we need to dial it in, but we've got to be conscious of the fees and everything else, because we know that this, for us to attract restaurants and those uses that we need, even multifamily and single-family development, it all hinges upon what kind of deal can they get here versus on the other side of 120th or on the other side of the Platte River.
But then again, there were a lot of years before we ever started collecting too, that, you know, we had to try to make up for. So you could, you could figure it however you want to be your benefit. And I just have to give credit to the city staff for putting the recommendation for fees for our water acquisition, tying it to a purchase of water. Because it, it just really sets the tone to have the discussion and, and realize there's a reason that it's there. Because if we weren't considering a water purchase the same time we were doing this, it could have fell off the table because we want to try to be more competitive. And so it's a balance. And, you know, so planning on your part, and I know there was some planning to tie those two together, was, was probably in, in everybody's best, best interest to have it on our minds while we were considering a purchase at the same time. All right. Mr. McElhany, have something else to add?
I do. And it ties into your comment about the, the turnover of councils and staffs, so staff over time. I think the other thing I'd like to see come back in this conversation is some explicit guidance around how and when we have these discussions or our folks that follow us have these discussions. And I'll just use as an example what we've done at the 27J Capital Facility Fee Foundation. When that original agreement sunset at its 10-year end and we wanted to rethink how that program worked and set it up for the duration, one of the heavy questions we had was fee. And at the time that that happened, we were in the belly of the recession. And so the fee was well over $1,000 per single family home. And that was not palatable to builders at the time. So we reset it much lower down in the six, high sixes, low sevens and tried to identify some mechanism that would determine at what frequency and at what rate that would increase over time. So it wouldn't just be a willy-nilly decision and something that later members of the board would have to remember. And so they actually, we actually brainstormed a number of options, but we ended up tying it to the construction, what is it, the construction cost index or the, so we used the index to tie it to. And so every two years, it's adjusted based on that index. And so I don't know if there's a similar or logical mechanism that we could use to potentially tie it in, so establish it. And then rather than have to remember, we have some rules that we define, some protocols that we define that say, this fee will be adjusted based on that index over time. And it becomes something that there's a, and there's some logic and some defense in terms of how and why we're tying that to. And again, our logic in that capital facility fee example was, we're tying it to the cost of, you know, building things. And this is a capital facility fee. So if the cost of materials, et cetera, are going up, then we need a fee that can escalate in a relative manner. So just a, a thought on that, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Do you have, anybody else want to comment on which direction you would go if you go to the next? Mr. Amador?
I'll just comment generally because we have time and we have the ability for a study to see where this, the trends are going and where they've been. I think the data is important for us to have, to be able to defend our decision of where we're at and where we want to go. And so I'm in favor of the $4,800 for the study to see how we're going. And just to, you know, we, I think the mayor definitely hit on it is that future councils, we need to set them up to make sure that they're going to be successful and they still have a mechanism to adjust the, the fees that are out there. So I think the data is important to have. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Okay. So anybody want to make a motion? Do we need a motion or do you just have direction, you think?
I think we've heard general consensus to proceed with the study, so that's what we will do.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next thing on the list is administrative council business. Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Douglas.
Yes, I got to counsel, administrative business. Here before you, I'm asking to go to the National City Leadership Summit. Last year was in Madison, Wisconsin, was built around, working with nonprofits and had to interact. And boy, I tell you, Madison had a, a lot of nonprofits that work with and it's amazing the size of the town and what they do there. Especially working with the college was something in itself. This year it's built around inclusion. Inclusion means everybody. Everybody matters. I know we have a lot of struggles here in our, in our, our city. We have struggles bringing our divided city together, whether it's with social programs, school zones, housing issues, police issues, the list goes on. This is advanced civic engagement built around inclusion. And, you know, I just, it's an investment that I see for myself and the tools that I have used as far as council. And I know, last year I went to Pittsburgh, I got an award for attending classes. I'm at the DIME level. That's basically amount, amount of time you put in for these classes. And it's another continuing education, so I'm asking for council support.
Okay. Speaking on that, I looked at Steve's travel requests and I'm looking at the rest of council. Knowing what this conference is, and you have the agenda here on the last pages, how many other council members want to go to this same conference? And I'm going to tell you, I've already talked, we've had conference calls and with the whole NLC University about this. And we're combining this with our big cities seminars too. This year, we're trying something new, Big Ideas for Cities. So the first day, we're actually doing Big Ideas for Cities before we even start the inclusion part. And I would really suggest that council members, especially those, and I mean, not even those that are staying, because I would suggest that JD or Jason also, this is going to be one of these classes you take with you forever. But I can't make nobody go. I mean, I'm, I've already signed my recommendation for Steve to go, but, and I will be there. But does any other council members think that they might want to attend this also? Okay.
I, I would love to. I don't know that I, as much as I think it's, it would be valuable, I have a hard time.
Yeah, you might be doing something completely different by that time.
I just can't commit to it, yeah.
I'm not going to answer Steve again. But anybody have any objections to Steve going to this conference?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Move to approve the travel request.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Next on this is reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Potem. We did send out the city manager report via email. We have an update tonight that Mr. McElhany referred to about Chambers Drive. An update on Mayor Ford's concern that was raised by a resident at the last meeting about lighting at 64th and Olive. An update on a concern raised by Mr. Douglas about the dashed yellow line and needing to change it to a no passing zone on Chambers. An update on Mr. Douglas's question about the new pedestrian bridge, bridge on Chambers over Second Creek. Then we have our monthly capital improvement program update, the lodge report, and the city council work schedule. Thank you.
City Attorney.
I have nothing to report this evening.
I have a few things I want to mention. I had a meeting with Galvanize. Galvanize is a company that did a presentation at our awards breakfast for our business awards. Several of you were there and got to see what they do, but they are a training company that train not just kids, but adults to perform more in the area of computer science for some of the computer analyst needs for companies. And it's a growing demand in our region. In that meeting that I had with them, they, and I, I think they would be very helpful in a, in an area like this because they're more Vo-Tech in nature, which would, which would create an opportunity for a lot of folks in our area and students. They have an interest in participating with School District 14. They have an interest in, in partnering with several businesses in our community. Businesses like Suncor, FedEx, you know, some of our larger users that would help them have a campus here locally. So I was very intrigued and I want to, to do everything I can to help promote another opportunity for, for educational purposes and the trades in our community. I went to Rotary and just a shout out, we're getting ready to do our cow pie bingo, May 6th. Renee has tickets for sale if anybody's interested and I'll, I'll bring some in as well. If they sell all the tickets, the prize will be, I believe it's upwards of $6,500 for the winner. So that's a bingo card, the size of a pasture, and wherever the deposit's made is the winner. $6,500.
Bingo.
Bingo. So May 6th at the Mabees, the Mabees property. And we're going to have Interact, our Rotary, the Rotarians from School District 14, the Interact Club will be doing concessions. They're going to have booths for other entities and nonprofits to have opportunity. And we're looking for sponsorships, but it'll be a good day and a fun afternoon. So May 6th, I believe it starts at noon. And that's also the day of the pancake breakfast. It's also the day of the pancake breakfast. So you can have pancakes in the morning and pie in the afternoon. And I say that because they're also going to have a, a pie sale with real pies, not cow pies, that you can purchase. So all about taking care of and, and moving forward to take care of needs in our community through scholarships, through the shoe program that Rotary does and other things. I have to mention something about Ann Helica. All of the years that she's been here and all of the efforts she put into making sure that this council was taken care of. When you needed something, Ann Helica was the person that was right there to take care of it. And she moved on and she, she made a change of employment and left the city so that she could better, have better time with her family. I know it was tough because she was crying all throughout her farewell. She will be truly missed. She was more than just somebody who took care of us. She was a friend to all of us. And I had to, I had to, for the record, wish her well in her new endeavors. She will be with 27J School District moving forward. And I know we'll, we'll see her, not as often, but we will see her. And I know she, she did it so that she could have more time with her family and I respect that. But she was a great employee and she will be missed by me and this council and I'm sure all of the administrative staff that had the pleasure to work with her. She had went to the police department for a while and we stole her back because she was just that good. There was departments all over trying to, to win her, win her as an employee. So, Ann Helica, if you're watching, you need something, you holler.
Come on back.
Come on back. But I know she's not watching because she's, she's got a break from all of this. She's doing stuff with her family, probably sleeping. All right. Tour of the new rec center. I want to thank the staff. Most of us were out there. It's amazing to go out there and see now that a lot of the tilt up walls and, and beams are in place. You can kind of start seeing what 106,000 square feet of rec center looks like. And the view, when you're standing there to be able, to be at the site and see what that view's going to be off that observation deck to the west is going to be phenomenal. We'll be looking right over the top of Mr. Lombardi's property. And last thing we want to see is a train wreck. I had to throw that out there for Mr. Lombardi. But the views are spectacular, Long's Peak. You know, it's, it's something that the residences, the residents of this community have been deserving of for a long time. And I'm glad that we were able to work as a team together and bring that to the forefront. We had a joint dinner with the Adams County School District, I think was beneficial. I'm looking forward to more of those meetings because it's, it's hard to act and not know when the right hand's doing something, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. And we have to be in concert and working with all of the public entities in our community so that we can make sure that we're working together so that we don't hurt their opportunity or they don't hurt our opportunity in when we're talking about land development and everything else. So I'm glad we got to sit down with Board of Directors of School District 14 and I look forward to future meetings. I think it was very beneficial. I had an ACED Executive Committee meeting. That is a fairly new board for me that I've been put on. I'm the mayor's representative for Adams County. And very, very interesting, we go over a lot of white papers. We get to see what is of the most interest in our area. And many of you may have seen, a couple of weeks ago, Denver Post said Adams County was one of the most unaffordable counties in the nation. And that's based on income levels to housing costs. And it's about 45% of people's income in Adams County goes towards mortgage or rent. So what that says is we need some higher paying jobs in Adams County and we have to. It's, it's very important, we have to have some more, more affordable housing. When I say affordable, I'm not talking about bad housing. I'm talking about stuff that the people that are employed in this community can have a nice home and, and have the resource that they need in this community. We've got to have construction defects fixed. If any state legislators are listening, we have to have construction defects fixed. We've got to have a multifamily for sale product. Over the next 10 years, we're having about 100,000 people migrate to Colorado from 25 to 35 years old. And they are first time home buyers and they can't afford to get into 450 and, and tomorrow I'll say 550 because it seems like it's going up that quickly because there's a lack of product on the market. So we really need, not just in this state, but especially in Adams County, have to see some affordable products that will allow first time home buyers to get in. When we're talking $1,600 a month rent for two bedroom apartments in Commerce City, I start getting concerned when we know that the income rates aren't at that level. So we have to diversify some of our housing. So I want to see that happening. Adams County Mayor's Lunch. About every other month, one of the mayors hosts and it's a ongoing dialogue of things that we all are passionate about within the county and things we have to work towards. The last couple of meetings, it's been construction defects have been on the forefront of the discussion. Homelessness, and there's a lot of issues that we're, we're trying to work together because they're, they're issues that affect every one of our communities. So it's all of the mayors in Adams County, no commissioners, just mayors. We all meet to talk about how we can work together on big issues like homelessness, construction defect, legislation. construction defect, legislation. Again, Rotary. And did I mention the Cow Pie Bingo?
Yes.
Okay. Then we had an ACC meeting. Continue to meet with all of the partners with the airport, Adams County Airport Commission meeting. It's going pretty good. We have our, our respective staff members involved. We have picked the four, I believe it is, right, Brian? Four? Planning and marketing. So right now, we're going through the planning, marketing scheme, and our economic development departments are involved. Barry Gore is heading that up on the Adams County side. Brian is our main member, and Michelle Claymore is Commerce City's secondary member. And thanks to the council for supporting me to continue to push that Commerce City needs to have representation. It's Aurora, Commerce City, and Adams County, and Brighton. And then, we had, I had the opportunity to go down and tour Rush Truck Centers. And if you all get that opportunity, please go down. If you, if you remember, it's the old auto auction site. Rush Truck Centers used to be Mountain State's Ford located on Highway 85 in Denver. They relocated in Commerce City. There is a large truck sale component to their facility. They sell everything from F-250s up, a lot of commercial boxes, utility-type boxes, tractor trailers, but they work on everything. Peterbilt, Kenworths, Freightliners, I mean, they, they work on all of it, and their shop is state-of-the-art. I mean, it's, it's off the hook. And with the truck sales component is a huge revenue piece for Commerce City. And I, I want to make sure that the residents know and that the council knows, for us to have a dealership, especially to have a Ford dealership and a Peterbilt dealership at one facility, is a big deal to Commerce City, from a revenue perspective, from that retail side. So if you get a chance, go down. I will tell you, they did let me know they're going to have a, a big event. They're requesting all of council. It'll be in June. They're going to send out information on it, be big barbecue, see their facility. They, they really would like to have all the government entities, the fire districts, the water district, the school districts, the city council. So if we can make sure that we go and support Rush Truck Centers, and my, my goal is to see if we can't, because they're a city-owned business, they're, they're in the city of Commerce City, it would be awesome if our government agencies were buying trucks through them instead of buying them through Thornton or Northland. So it just makes sense to have our money stay in our town. So next time we go out to bid, I want to make sure we at least vet Rush Truck Centers development and see if we can get a better price on, on our trucks and, and keep our residents' taxpaying money in Commerce City. Adams County, Commerce City Joint Meeting with the Adams County Commissioners. I think that was long overdue as well. I think it went better than expected. We did go over a lot of items. Most of the council was there. Most of the commissioners were there. There were two missing. They both had eye surgery or eye doctor appointments, and of course, I had to ask who got the first shot in. But there, there was three commissioners there, and I think it was well-received. Where we need to partner, especially on things like schools in District 14 that are in the county, not necessarily in Commerce City, crosswalks that match with Commerce City's crosswalks, how we deal with Brighton Road between 104th and 120th, a lot of dialogue about new development, roadways, highways, participation with devolution. So thank you to all the, the city council that was there, and thanks for the staff for making sure we had the appropriate information and dialogue. But it's good to build relationships and work on those things that we're going to need in the future to continue moving this community forward. I don't have anything else. If there's any council member that would like to add to my report, you're more than welcome to do so now. Otherwise, do you have anything, Mr. McElhaney? Your lights are lit. I'll, I'll let you have the floor.
Just real quick, Mr. Amador, Mr. Bullock and I attended the Backpacks to Briefcases event today at the mart. We were each able to play host at a table of somewhere between seven and 10 students from somewhere in Adams County. I think Renee and I both sat at tables that had not one member of the Commerce City community, but I think Mr. Amador had at least one or two at his table. Long story short, for folks that aren't familiar with the program, these kids are effectively selected or nominated by their schools, their counselors. Some of these are kids that need a little bit of a nudge to understand that there is a viable path to somewhere beyond high school. They sit through, similar to what we might see at an NLC or CML-type event, where they go through a couple of seminar-type programs early in the day, whether it's, you know, interviewing techniques or college readiness or otherwise, some neat seminar-type programs, and then they come into a large lunch, much like, again, we would see at CML or NLC. And today had a panel of five individuals who were able to give them some personal narratives around their personal paths from, you know, perhaps challenge to success or otherwise. And so one of the panelists today was Commissioner Tedesco, a gentleman who had been a world champion martial artist. And one of the interesting examples was a young man, I think he's currently 11 or 12, who actually appeared on Shark Tank five times. Young man who essentially put together a lemonade stand when his parents told him that he, they wouldn't buy him the Death Star Lego that cost $500 almost, and told him he had to earn the money. This young man actually figured out how to franchise this lemonade stand, and so did pretty well for himself in that regard. Great example. But what happens at the tables, I think, is the cool part. And so, Mr. Amador and Mr. Bullock and I, you each, we each have the opportunity to sit there and interact with these kids and try and figure out what they learned that day, try to facilitate some discussion, expose them to the kinds of things that we do in our role and that our staff does in their role, and that networking and dialogue that's so important in life, prompting them to talk about where they're thinking about going to school, and then the little stuff that they may not be exposed to in their day-to-day life, like, what fork and knife do I use? And what do I do with my napkin when I leave the table? And which water is mine? And which bread do I use? And so, trying to help talk them through those things, and they actually get a little handout that shows how to sort of translate what's in front of you in terms of plates and silver-wearing glasses. And, you know, we, we, I say this almost jokingly, but the reality is, that's, those are very important skills. And reminding these kids to not talk when somebody is up speaking, Mr. Bullock had to leave unfortunately, and his table got a little talkative, and I had to ask them to quiet down while speakers were speaking. And I mean, these are things that are important, right? Not having your phone out while you're listening to a presentation, and just talking them through these things. And so it was, it was a really neat opportunity for us to be able to participate in that this year, and it's something that the Adams County Education Consortium puts on every year. But a neat program, and again, 500 kids today were able to go through that experience. And so if you, if you have an opportunity to participate in that through, whether it's your business or your nonprofit, it's a really worthy thing to find a way to sponsor a table or otherwise and, and participate. So, thanks.
Absolutely. Anybody else have anything to add? Seeing none. If there be no further business, come before this city council this evening. We are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.